Looks like a book cycle.
I think so. I think she's got.
They have to overcome, right?
Okay. Five thirty? Five thirty, Glenn, you want to do the honors and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to our leader, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right. Got a pretty good house for a cold January and welcome everybody to the new year. I hadn't seen you, most of you since last year. Looking around the, looking around the room here, we have a few introductions to make and um want to ask, we have any visitors or petitioners we need to recognize to get you in the agenda pretty early? Anything? No? Okay. Uh, we've started uh bringing in some of our employees uh to meet the council, but we can wait just a minute. Let's get through the uh meeting minutes approval for last month. Has anybody got any uh comments or revisions? If not, I'll take a motion.
So.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor? All right. First things first, I was already wandering astray. So um we've got some department heads with some employees. We're starting to practice of introducing new employees to the council. So who wants to go first? Chief?
All right, so this Louis with us this evening and uh Marshall County native, born, raised, graduated Marshall County High School, served for uh Lyon County Sheriff's Office, Marshall County Sheriff's Office and uh Murray PD. And uh he's got some experiences uh driving a truck and uh some other things as well. He's uh he's got several certifications besides being a police officer. He's been an armor or firearms instructor, uh hazer instructor as well for his previous agency. And uh welcome him here to Calver City. Look forward to having him for several more years. Um so you've got fifteen years probably.
Yeah.
So would you like to say anything or?
Uh just uh the honor to work for the city of Calver City and uh I look forward to to serve in everyone. Hope to see you all in further endeavors.
What was your hire date? You remember the date?
Uh twenty third.
Twenty third, alright. So we got in.
Very crisp.
Morning in, just before Christmas, had an early morning thing, family came, everybody showed up for it.
Yeah.
They're very good. Very proud to have Dennis on board.
A pleasure to meet him.
Thank you.
Good to have you.
If you guys have anything, if you got any questions, he's up here ready to accept us.
Alright, so Bobby, you got some folks to introduce? For utilities? They found out they were coming today.
Yeah, I know.
And I noticed the smiling faces when you came in.
Uh these are, these are the three of my newest, we're the water and sewer. I'm Bobby, I'm superintendent. These are three of our newest employees here and so far I've been pretty proud of these guys.
So far. We hope we'll continue to be.
I gotta, I gotta keep an eye on that one down there, but.
I understand that.
I'm gonna let them tell you their names a little bit about them, that way y'all can just kind of hear them talk. Go ahead and start with Jonathan.
Jonathan Wharton, uh been city two years, transferred from Minnesota. I really enjoyed here, very awesome.
We didn't drag Jonathan around, this is your first time, this is not a double dip.
This is first time.
Okay, we're very good. Alright.
Chase Austin, I'm happy to be here. Uh though we don't have much to say honestly, uh I know some of you, cause my brother and I own the lot business and we were around covering a lot.
Right.
None of that, I'm happy to be here and looking forward to working for the long run and stuff.
Alright, very good.
William Casey. Own my own business. That's about it.
Good. Welcome to Calver City, we're glad you're on board. And uh I appreciate your, your humor and us with the last minute request to come up. This is something I think we, we need to do.
Yep.
And one of our most important things we do as a council and a mayor is provide a stable working place and appreciate your service, really.
That's good.
That's very true, right there.
Pivot, Blair's gonna be snapping the photos. Well now you've already got him taking care.
Four jobs. Two lefts.
We're doing it all three at once, I'm not wondering.
Alright, very good. Before we get into old business, we got any, any visitors or anything else we need to bring up? If I missed anybody? No? Okay. Alright, um old business. One of the things we talked about briefly last week that I know may be on someone's mind is there is a lawsuit that's gotten a little bit of talk around the county. Uh Gearsville Fire Department has named uh several defendants in um some taxing district dispute. So we've got, the city has got representation in that. Uh KLC is not uh paying for our representation because insurance policy we have doesn't cover this, but we've answered it and uh the defendant's attorneys are developing a strategy. So it's really early on on that journey. Uh you know, there's really, we could go to executive, but I don't have anything to tell you past what I just told you. So I just want to keep you in loop in case you're hearing some rumor here saying in your windows or whatever. So that's where we're at. So there is uh, we have given an answer and uh that's where we're going. So in front of everybody, this is old business slash new business. You got a financial disclosure in front of the council members and myself. This is a normal thing. If you have any questions or comments, Glenda, I'm sure can answer them. Glenda, you got anything you want to put in there?
Just sorry, I'm uh thinking of it, it just needs to be back to me about the work fifteen.
Got a due date, I'm glad you put a due date on it, thank you.
I think that's in our.
I'm glad there's a due date. So our ethics ordinance. If anybody wants a copy, we can get a copy of that as well. Any other old business to discuss? No? Okay, moving forward, we've got uh some information here and everybody was sent out information on the, the grant grant, which is uh, it's kind of funny because that's the name of the grant is Grant. And so this is an opportunity to go after uh funding for this uh multi-use trail improvement, which we've got some other sources. I'm gonna turn this over to John.
Uh we filed, if you guys remember, the land and water conservation fund grant to uh improve or expand the multi-use trail around the park and over to Railroad Avenue. Uh this is uh this, this grant program. I won't call it the grant grant, it's the grant program. Um that being an abbreviation for the government resources, all accelerating needed transformation. I have no idea what that means actually, but it's up to a hundred and fifty thousand, which should be um almost enough to cover our, what would be our portion of that land and water conservation fund. Uh that's a fifty fifty grant. Um I think they go up to two fifty. So this would, this could uh indeed cover the balance of what may not be covered by that grant for this project. So that's what this is.
So what kind of action do we need from the council?
All we need is just approval of this resolution. It's authorizing the mayor um to act as our authorized representative. And you can execute documents and all the other stuff that goes with that.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion for the resolution.
Okay.
No second.
Motion in a second. Uh we do this by a commission?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you for that. It took uh the grant writer who wrote the previous submission, it got like a hundred percent mark on that grant write-up. And so here it was after you never hear somebody ranking that high on the previous grant submission and she, hey, there may be a better one. So she actually had to go and say, you know, say, maybe we won't take that one, I got a hundred on it. So I thought that was.
Actually, on that land and water conservation fund, that first, first round, our grant through that she submitted scored a one hundred, which is almost unheard of. So I'm very pleased with that.
Okay.
I've never seen a hundred very often either.
No, yeah. Um yeah. I mean, that can't. Um next order of business that's on the agenda is a first reading of an ordinance to uh define short-term rentals. You want to give us some background on this, John?
Um when we're talking about short-term rentals in uh the past, um we had a, the public or the planning com- commission went through and held a public uh hearing um to uh take um comment on this. And basically what they're doing is if you look at the definition in the current planning of zoning ordinance, you'll find that a planet, the bed and breakfast actually meets is the same, would be the same definition, short-term rental actually fits that definition of the bed and breakfast. So what they're doing basically is just saying, if you'll see there and she'll be read, but we're actually just saying, okay, it's being defined as and be, it's being placed in there. So it's basically said, short-term rentals, go see bed and breakfast. So that's basically what it is. It's just a way for someone to, to uh get put in the right, placed in the right direction on the, in the ordinance if we're looking through it for that particular usage.
So functionality, bed and breakfast is a known entity and it can only be done in certain zones and can't be done in others, correct? Is that the functional?
Should be, yeah, bed and breakfast is set up where it can be done in certain areas and and if I'm not mistaken, I don't have it in front of me, but if I'm mistaken, I think most areas are for bed and breakfast are gonna be by conditional use.
Okay. Think all.
Think they all are. I guess, I think that's right. It's been a while since I looked at it, but I think that's right.
So I wanted to do a short-term rental. Um and it is a bed and breakfast, under the ordinances, I've got to get conditional use.
That's correct.
Which is what we wanted to achieve. And just to be clear, short-term rentals, I believe, have been treated like that for some time. It was just not stated in the ordinance.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Do you have by chance the um the recommendation from the planning commission?
It's in there in the book.
Okay, alright, um.
So it is recorded in the meetings, that's.
There is the recommendation, I don't, we made copies of it.
Yeah.
So I just want to get back.
Bring that out, if you don't mind, so they can see it at some point. If they want to look at it, we forgot to make copies of that form, but the planning commission did recommend this. Um and if you need to see a copy of it, we'd be glad to do so.
Is it okay if I just send you one tomorrow?
Yes, that's fine.
So I wanted to get around and make sure that council knew that. And I assume most everybody did. So uh Chairman Don, who I think is uh unavailable tonight, or he would have maybe talked about it.
He signed it.
Okay. Alright, any, any discussions or questions? We have a little bit of discussion here. Has anybody got any other questions? Okay. So I'd take a motion to approve the ordinance. Oh, excuse me, get my cart, blow the horse. Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, the ordinance amending article three point one of the Calvert City zoning ordinance, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero six to define short-term rentals. Whereas the Calvert City Planning Commission has considered and proposed an amendment of article three point one of the zoning ordinance to address and clarify the definition and treatment of short-term rentals. Example VRVO and whereas the planning commission is held a public hearing after notice to receive public comment with the authority set of those amendment in accordance with tariffs one hundred point two eleven, subsection three and whereas the planning commission has recommended to the city council that the ordinance be revised as fore-said and whereas the city council has determined the recommendation of the planning commission to represent the best interest of the city and to promote the best interest of the residents of the city. Now therefore be overtaking by the city of Calvert City, common with article three point one of the Calvert City zoning ordinance, ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash zero six, hereby amended as follows. All in the section of thing below is added and no other portion of this ordinance is affected by this amendment. Article three definitions three point one, words and phrases defined, short-term rentals. This term applies to rentals of dwellings, is defined as bed and breakfast and is regulated accordingly by the applicable provisions of this ordinance.
Alright. So for ordinance twenty twenty-five zero one, will we take a motion to introduce?
I'm making motion in there, nice.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second? Okay, so Glenn's gonna do a roll call on this.
Mr. Knight, second.
Yes.
Okay. Um Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shel- Sheldon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hale.
Yes.
Councilman Howard.
Yes.
Councilman Rowan.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. And I also wanted to, depending on that adoption, the previous and you know, the, the rework, the promise of a better grant, so appreciate that too. Okay. Now, as uh everyone knows, we've got a Churchill Downs property slated for our area. And they haven't finalized an announcement. Formal announcement that I'm aware of yet is with complete with completion dates, et cetera, ribbon cutting dates like that. Okay. But that said, there's still quite a lot of work that's gonna be done out there around the Kentucky Fried Chicken area with traffic coming off that interstate. There's, social media has been a buzz, a buzz with some of that here lately. Um Campbell Drive um is something that we had worked on, two thousand
fourteen.
Fourteen or so.
Yeah.
And that's the, that's the privately owned road that goes up between the two motels that had the uh the uh Willapond Restaurant driveway and then the two motels that goes on up to Tag. Okay, so we've got some estimates on that roadway and cost and routing and, and stuff and some of the spatial things are somewhat of a problem through there. Just, you know, putting, letting you know uh that as we move forward, some announcements from Kentucky Transportation, we got ways that our new multi-use trail is gonna tie in and it's just kind of dead-ended right now. And then the, the status of Campbell Drive, so we've got city of Calver City, you got private landowners up there, we've got a Kentucky Transportation, there's a lot of work going on right there. So as we move forward, Campbell Drive particularly concerns me in that uh where uh where we're gonna have Churchill tying in, there's like several yards in there that are, that are gonna be kind of nowhere land. And so that's gotta be pointed and oriented the right way to facilitate at some point Campbell Drive becoming a public owned right away. So that's just a heads up, I don't know where that's going. We've got some estimates for that, that work that are quite old in the box and they need to be updated on costs. And then we, we, it's gonna be up to us to figure out if we can have a top end owner and which way we intend to go uh as far as that goes. Maybe we're kind of, you know, two thousand and fourteen, we kicked the can down the road. Now we're kind of, you know, on, on the uh, on the clock, if you will, because we want that to new development to work out and, and do all the things we needed to do. There's gonna be utility work uh possibly coming or will be coming on that side of the road and a lot of work out there. So that's something we're gonna be tackling over the course of the next, to probably two to three months. So it'll be talking to landowners. You may, as council members, you may hear about some of that. There may be some, some folks, uh possibly in social media, whatever, just giving you a heads up that we're gonna be poking around in there. Uh by that, I mean trying to figure out what, what's the best course of action to try to facilitate a nice install with, with minimal disruption moving forward.
Um
Let's move forward, updating information on that.
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
So that's just one, one thing that I know is coming along and we've got other access points around the city that have similar characteristics. Now we have privately held roadways that are servicing multiple buildings or cobble together and we're all about that. And that, and you know, as, as long as people are willing to do that, that's great. Uh sometimes we have to relocate utilities around that kind of thing. We have other businesses wanting to tie in, so it's kind of a hodgepodge uh stuff, but this is one that's gonna require some addressing. So with that, this put out there as a primer, um and I, I talked to uh Councilman Stokes earlier and I have never taken a part as a council member, I never taken part in a workshop type environment. So we could talk about projects that we care about as council members, as, as city move forward. I just wanted to get your ideas on whether you're interested in us looking at that sort of thing and whether you'd find value in it and whether we need to, so there's some open records laws we have to understand and, and move toward. We had to figure out, you know, what that agenda looks like and, and put together a notice, but just an open idea of where you guys see us going in the next couple of years and uh what, what turns you on and what turns you off, problems you see coming.
You know, we had a workshop before we came up with the marketing director's position, we did have a workshop.
Yep. And that was very specific, I think.
It wasn't, we, I mean, it was before we hired Blair, but we came up with the ideas and we sort of honed that in, it's what we wanted, y'all remember, we met down at the old fires, the
Yeah.
Education fire, whatever you call it down there.
Fire training dinner.
Spring center and then we had some more, but I think, I think workshops would help us.
We, we have some economic development discussions uh and how Calver City participates in economic development in county. That'd be, that'd be a topic that uh would be of interest to me. Uh Blair, Blair.
We think on the, the, there was also a work, sort of a workshop on the generator too, we have here.
Okay.
And I mean, it's, there were people in the audience and stuff.
Right.
But we did.
We had some workshops before.
Well.
Master plan.
Uh master plan, we had some on the river, on the river port, that's been years and years ago. Fifteen, sixteen years ago, probably.
I think it'd be a great opportunity to throw some ideas out there and have some discussion. I'd be for it.
I think it'd be at least one, probably four hour session, if you're just gonna leave it open-ended without a specific deal, so. I'm seeing some nodding of heads and I will look into that and we'll be calling and try to figure out when we can schedule one. You know, we've uh, we've been in the news a lot lately for a lot of different issues, I think mainly good ones. The development out there, the uh, the intersection is something, a lot of work's gone into that through the, through the years and different entities. And now it's gonna be moving and I think maybe what are some of the, instead of just talking about problems, there's some opportunities too that we might see, wanna try to position ourselves for. Okay. So um we'll, we'll be talking, I don't know whether we're gonna get it done in January or February, it'd be, it'd be nice to get it done for the next council meeting, wouldn't you think? Is everybody gonna be in town?
Yeah. I'll do it all again.
Okay. So we'll have to, we'll have to consult certain, certain uh teams' schedules to make sure we avoid some was that, we had to avoid Marshals, Murray State in UK, is that the ones?
And, and high school, they're doing.
Yeah, Marshals, yeah, they're doing great.
Yep.
Well, I don't know, we're ready to try to set up a date for that right now. I know we've got uh some folks are gonna be going to continuing education. And uh what?
This week. We bet Friday morning.
This week.
Friday afternoon.
Alright. So Glenn, when we go schedule these things, what's the best way we do this?
I'm just sitting here thinking, y'all all get together and we'll do a special call.
Yeah, it's gonna be a special call meeting of some sort. Um.
Some four hours. Depends on what time of the day you want to have it. Sort of wherever that is.
I think evenings, is there a bay? Okay, we're trying to find an evenings. Okay. Let me see, maybe we can get a training center downstairs.
You set up something, just send out doodle poles and see if we can get something that way, that'd be easier that way, they get a chance to look at their calendar and then respond back the dates that work for them.
A what?
A doodle pole, what it is basically.
Just send you.
It was a stripper named Doodle.
Well, that, that, yeah, a doodle pole, you thought I meant, okay. No, it's, it's an app and you go to a website and it helps you schedule.
I'm getting that out.
I love it. I think you're great.
Very much.
That may be on the workshop agenda too.
Gotta be in industrial zone.
Gotta be industrial zone. There's a home for everything in Calver City.
Already scoped it out.
We're just providing food, okay? Aye. Uh no, what, yeah, it's just a, it's just a, an email with some dates on there and you just pick the dates that you are available and send that back and that's how you got to pull everybody together. We'll take your word for it.
Okay. So we'll set the agenda up, be a special call, which means we have to only deal with what's on the agenda. We'll make it real broad. Basically call it a workshop or whatever is applicable through that. I've heard Greg talk about it before. We can get that done. Alright, you ready for some departmental reports?
Sure. Starts.
Well, um yeah, sure, go ahead and do a project report version, we'll go from there.
One I gave you.
The one you gave me.
The note I gave you.
The note you gave.
About fuel sales. To be in here.
Don't give me notes. Did you, you needed that note back?
Yes, I was letting you see.
We'll start it, I'll provide it to you in a minute. Uh guess what? We found it.
Okay, alright. Alright. Start off with the, the the restroom in Doctor's Park is closing on completion, the biggest holdup right now appears is gonna be some um parts that have been on delay um to finish it up. For the most part, it's like ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent done, just those parts are all that's really missing. Uh that and we'll have some concrete work after it warms up, but for the most part, it's uh it looks pretty good and solid, solid as a brick wall, it's, you know, that's what it is, a brick wall. Be nice, be nice over there. Thank you. Um we also got the bids in, we're doing reviews on the bids for the uh pickleball courts. Uh the prices came in somewhere around what, two forty, two thirty, two forty, somewhere in that range right there. So it turned out pretty decent on that. Um but we're doing a review to see who, who we're gonna recommend, so.
What do we have in the budget?
They're not gonna what was it?
Three, three seventy-five.
Two seventy-five, right? Yeah, I think so. So it came in under budget. Uh right now, we just don't, they don't need to be out there anyway, because if they get out there right now, because they're gonna fit, do some film. Uh they'd be burying up. Um the uh airport was what we sold this year. And I'm talking about the county year of two thousand and twenty-four. We sold a regular um one hundred low lead, which is what most reciprocating aircraft use. Forty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Uh that's seventy-six hundred and twenty gallons. Jet fuel for helicopters and et cetera. Ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-one uh ninety-two gallons for forty-eight thousand twenty-three, four, or twenty-four dollars. Total of ninety-two thousand and fifteen dollars for the year is what we sold and, and jet or aviation fuel. So I thought that was pretty good and I thought you all might want to, want to know that. So and we didn't spend that much on it when we, when we purchased it, so it is, it's paying for itself. Um you also received in your packet um the compliance office activity report for the county year of two thousand and twenty-four. Um and I just thought that would be something that you guys would like to know um what this young, what this gentleman, this young gentleman can do in uh two and a half days a week. So he's been pushing hard and taking care of a lot of issues for us. And you'll see there uh his quantities for conditional use applications, all the way down to open record requests, since as we've been dealing with. Uh we also implemented iWorks, which, which is a system that tracks our code, our compliance as well as our permits. So all of our permitting and stuff like that, we're keeping records through that system. Um we've scanned in all the water sewer maps that we hadn't, that we did not have here uh to, to the number of about five hundred. Um we'd already, we'd already scanned everything we had at city hall and now we have everything digitally. Uh we have a digital copy of everything, easy AC access off of the computer and the hard copies are archived. So you have any questions about the report, report and the activity I've been doing? If you have any questions about the report and the activity, I'd be glad to discuss it with you.
So, you know, by having Bruce here, he's got in-depth experience with all facets of government and. In addition to the numbers, he's really setting, setting forth the cadence of the office. How this works, what works, what doesn't work. And, you know, he, he doesn't intend to do it forever. And so he's really getting an order of organization. That's very important. Moving forward to set that initial up. So he's been working closely with John and it, uh. That doesn't really show just, uh, looking at this as the numbers of the hits. So the organization and how it's set up and how we wanna handle procedurally is another thing that kind of overlays on top of all that, which I think brings a lot of value to us. So. Any questions on that? All you got? All right. Uh, Chief Davis?
Yes, sir.
You got anything to talk about?
Yeah, we, uh, medical calls are still running high. Uh, luckily our phone calls have been pretty good. Haven't had any trouble with it. Uh, we did receive a grant from the fire commission, uh, three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, we're in the process of talking with some vendors, uh, and getting some quotes to follow what we have to do legally. Uh, we're probably gonna try to put a little money with it. And as of right now, we're looking at getting three cameras and three, uh, chargers for the trucks, uh, their kicks. Is what they pay. That's normal imaging camera.
Thanks you for the acronym explanation. You're a fine example for everyone, everyone to follow. Go, thank you.
I think as good as you can. That should put, that should put a tick on every first line truck that we hit going out. Uh. One of them will have to, uh. They should be able to, uh, send back pictures to the, uh, to a computer, uh, where if we see something we don't like or looks. Kind of weird, we can go back and look at it. Uh. But we're looking at thirty-two fifty, I say, and then putting about a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars worth of budget money into the, into getting that.
Right now you've got one.
Correct.
Okay, so this.
One of them is, one of them is the original one that the, that the industry bought for us. And it's, uh, it's obsolete.
Talking about the canes?
Or me?
The, the iris is gone. Are you, are you talking about that one?
No, we've got a, we've got a different one.
Okay, I got you. Any questions on, on that opportunity? All right, thanks, Tim.
Yes, sir.
Bradley?
Um, let's see, we are, um, forced after the snowstorm, all of the, well, we've been taking all that off today and. Started cleaning all that mess up, getting ready for the next one. Um. We will run the lead back again this week. We had this call, we didn't run it last week, so, um, we'll get back, kind of wrap that up this week. Um, our, our guys are working on taking down all the Christmas decorations and putting that up. Uh. Also, our, our new Jitter wagon that, uh, we purchased. Uh, we, I don't guess we actually purchased it yet, but tomorrow morning, hopefully around eight o'clock in the morning, but. We're gonna get trained on it and I think that would be a help piece of equipment for us and for Bobby and you. Yeah.
All right, share the love.
Yeah, and then, uh, they did finish up Tenth Avenue, the driveway connection that was messed up. Uh, they went back, Smith done a excellent job fixing it. Uh, it turned out really good. Um, what else? The. I haven't heard from the generator.
Did you, did you clean off Tenth Avenue? Did you clean it off? Did you actually put a blade on it? Oh, okay, all right.
See first, you did. But everything's trying to get back into the swing of our dailies. But everything's running good. Yeah, I know.
I've heard good things about, uh, Tenth Avenue, several calls on that. It's, it's a lot.
It's great.
A lot improved. The drainage hopefully will be, uh, take care of it for, for. Unappropriate time as that it's a stopgap. So I know that took a lot of hours, probably well from you personally sitting in that grade all right, so. It looks good, looks good. All right, so, uh, Dan or Bobby, who's gonna, who's gonna talk about utilities? You guys do rock, paper, scissors or something?
I'll start and he can finish.
Okay, that's good. We'll do that.
Well, I guess we got, I mean, our, most of our projects are still ongoing. We've got, but we got one that's been awarded, our Lone Valley extension. It's, it's been, hopefully started there then. Um, we still have, we're still wait, waiting on our results. From soil samples on, uh, cut plane, cut off road.
Hmm.
I don't know why they have that. They keep on saying it's all, they haven't got back. Uh, we're waiting on that, uh. There's a bunch of small little projects and stuff we're trying to get done. There you go. And we got, we're still waiting on our high transfer pumps. I think they messaged last week and said that they were supposed to be in, hopefully the next, which we posted that. But it knows it and so we can get those. Oh, yeah, and, uh, I've got a quote, um, on my backlog, uh, I've got a quote. On replacing the media and refurbishing all of our filters for finished water. And, uh, hopefully we can get that rolling very soon, because, uh, it needs to be done. So we're gonna put that in the motion of getting it done. Like I say, hopefully that, hopefully that hoping happens within, I'd say, a month or so.
Forget, forget trying to get. Need your input, trying to get a meeting and get a little bit of chat and to review the projects and the next coming and see what we've been doing and what need to do. And part of that is that you were coming back after, um. That intersection.
Yeah, as, as things are developing around exit twenty-seven. And we're doing utility construction. I remember, uh, it's kind of public service, but, uh, all you guys realize, I mean, Calver City water goes outside Seagulls. And contrary to popular belief, you, you, whenever you ground a ride away to Calver City water, you're not signed up to be annexed in the city. That was evidently something that was going around and creating a little bit of dust up. We got that taken care of Lone Valley Road. So that's helping up on, uh, Grand Lakes subdivision, I think is the proper name for that. So there're gonna be some enhanced fire plugs, excuse me. Fire plugs and different things, improved service, less boil water orders, because if we ever lose pressure, they lose pressure first. So. We've got, uh, Marshall yards coming in on one side, looking at a pumping station and then. The potential for further development and one is down the highway sixty-two corridor and other ones from possibly Ford Square. We're looking at the overall picture, everything that could be possible, making sure that when we pull the trigger on utility improvements, that we can do it all. As far as what might be growth that we have. So it's a pretty complicated picture. There's some, um, you know, I, I think it's. Good to say that we've got several parties interested in property and property is, is, is under contract like it hadn't been before. So we can look into some of the potential uses and make sure that. Wastewater in particular is what is a point of, of big concern. Make sure we got the proper lift stations designed and that the rest of the system can convey it. To our, our, to our treatment plant. Overall, our, our capacity to treatment plant, we think is, is very adequate, quite large. We need more business, okay? So this is good things. We just need to make sure that we properly plan the infrastructure to get there. Um.
Looking at the, the liner and the.
Yep, so.
Finish that up and see if you can do that.
Utility, uh, had looked at the, uh, the UV beating up the, what we call the, uh. Halos around it and the process that was full of labor. It was very high. And so we rebid the whole replacement of the liner is the best option to go. The downside is you gotta get them ready for replacements. So you gotta do some extra work and it's, and we've deslodged them recently, so it's not. It's not the, the body of work that had to be done before, but it's still quite a lot of work to replace. But that's the one that was recommended and we, uh, we signed a contract to do that. As the main one, I think, so. So you can, you can run a utility department with a lot of help from grants and, uh. Takes careful planning, not unlike the airport, by the way. Dan, we got anything else?
No.
Okay. Chief Cannon? When you come bearing gifts.
He might want to call him gift. I don't know, he might not. He wanna deal with it, I don't know, but we'll pass this around, uh, there's two right there. What this first, uh, package is, that's the, uh, twenty twenty-four numbers. Place of argument. Boy, don't give your mind.
Well, you just emailed it to me.
I, I don't think it. So the first, uh, starting back right here, these are the, uh, numbers for like our charges, our citations, arrests, and, uh, total is four hundred and seventy-two of them. That's a little bit lower from the previous year, previous year. That was a lot lower. Previous year was, uh, eight hundred and sixty-one, so. That could be a good thing to follow. We might be cleaning house, so to speak, I guess.
Yeah.
But as you can tell, the, a lot of the charges, I mean, it's this. Everything the big cities have, just on a smaller scale, uh, oh, we've got eighty-seven speeding citations, you know? Uh, I mean, so we are, uh, monitoring speeds at different locations, um. We got several drug, drug offenses that we've got. So, uh, as tips come in or as we see stuff in cars, we're dealing with it. Uh, see the, there's an acronym down there, about midway down the first page, T-Bucks. That stands for theft by unlawful taking. That's theft. Those people who are reporting stuff that's taken from them. And then we got it broken down to different categories, shoplifting and then the price ranges. Then auto is obviously vehicle theft, but, um. You got your burglary, uh, we have, we have one of those, uh, maybe sexual abuse, criminal trespassing, menacing, one endangerments. So that's just kind of an overview of the dirty work that we've done, so to speak. That is taking people to jail, writing tickets, doing stuff to people. I mean, there's stuff that's gotta be done, but it's. You guys get it. Yeah, this next package right here, these are the, uh, calls that we've had. It's like, I call it a CAD report, computer aided dispatch. And I've got this broken down to the types of calls. The month and the number and then, uh, there's a total for each category. And then at the last page, there's a total. And if you look at this, the, uh, majority of the, the calls that we do are self-initiated. Uh, we got alcohol patrols and then over twelve thousand of those. Extra patrols, we did over ten thousand of those. The extra, the extra patrols, that's us checking businesses, that's residential checks, that's, uh, driving down the streets, logging. That we are in these certain areas, that's showing that the guys are out, they, they, they aren't just sitting around, they are moving. And, uh, of course, every other call, calls we've had, I mean, you guys can look through here, uh. I mean, here's. Anything that you can think of that, that people call, call for help for, or call the police or dispatch, they're gonna be coming to this, uh. On page two at the bottom says M-MBA. That's, uh, that's your accidents, that's your vehicle accidents. We got injuries and non-injuries there. So we had ninety-nine of those that were. Where no one was hurt. That's like the parking lots accidents. And then see your suspicious activities on page two, uh, suspicious persons, suspicious vehicles. Most of these are called in, but we also log those as we come across and like before we're out driving around and we notice that this vehicle is at this place and's not been there before. We think that maybe something might, may or, or may not be going on. And so for the year, the total, uh, calls within the city limits were, uh, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-one.
What, what is, what is an alcohol patrol?
All right, so the alcohol patrol is these businesses. They have licensing and stuff like that. Uh, we honestly, uh, get a little bit from that. So we check the businesses, we'll drive to the parking lot, we'll go in and say hi to the clerks working at, at these locations that sell. Package sales or, uh, restaurant services like Costa Ricas Negros, walk in there, be visible a little bit throughout the day, uh. The biggest one's five star. I mean, they get two or three trucks in a day, it seems like. That are loading packages there. And so. We provide a service that we, we, we drive through there and we're visible. We may or may not be on the property, but we, we could sit across the street or something.
Who's curious?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Good question.
If you, uh. Look at, uh, budget tracking that Linda has, the, uh, great, great regulatory D is in there, hundred place budget, right?
Well, thank you for putting these together.
Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm easy to, to locate, so.
You know, when, when people talk about small towns like Calver City and why we have, uh, why we have police and how we equip police, if you're setting up. A police force, especially where we have two interstates coming through, you gotta be loaded for everything. And, uh, appreciate your efforts. Appreciate the support.
You guys have any other questions for me, just, just let me know.
Thank you.
Great, great, great year this year. Good sign. Thanks.
All right. And we got in all the departments except for the airport. And Blair. Blair's used to going first and I can hardly see her over the, over. I don't know if you're, are you, are you hunkering down to try to?
The, the one reason, the, one of the reasons I wanted to get this.
We'll do airport first.
The police department sent their report to me today.
And, uh.
They did a flagging, we passed everything.
We'll leave the best for last.
Well, ours again, things are fast.
Do you hear that?
Oh, yeah. I agree. Uh, regarding the airport, um. This last month, the FAA continued its I-R-O-R of our AOP and our CHP.
Are you done? Is that it?
That's it.
That's it? It's all we got to say?
That's the end of my report. Uh, the FAA is coordinating their in-office review of the airport layout plan and the terminal area plan. That is important. Because. Um, this next couple of weeks or next month, probably by next month, we will be submitting to the state and to you. Uh, the engineering fees. And schedule for the development of the next eight unit hang. The FAA has to approve the location of that building. And they normally do that through the airport layout plan process, but we don't wanna wait for that. So we're doing what they call a red line pencil change to the existing terminal area plan. No, Sid, it's just, it's three months of talking for two months of work, but, um, something that we get used to and we have to do. The upcoming. Kentuckians for a Better Transportation Conference is coming up. I know you have a couple of representatives going to that conference. Uh, Melissa Vacher from our office will be there. She will be tasked with coordinating. Uh. You and Blair getting to the right people to talk about the. The prioritization of, uh, airport projects at Calvert City.
Okay.
And. The currently stalled in various levels of bureaucratic discussion. Is the approach light system project and the fence project.
Okay.
And those will be the key, key ones to discuss at that meeting.
Less than subtle hint.
Thus ends my report. Thus ends my report.
Okay. Well, Blair and I are traveling to that end of next week, so.
Don't forget the Pappy English.
Okay.
No, John, John's Grant was an, an acronym, so.
The Grant, Grant.
Grant, Grant.
Grant, I think he's got it.
The Grant, Grant.
The Grant, Grant.
The Grant, the Grant grants all the rage at the pad.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright. So I'll, I'll have to take my vocabulary sheet with me and all discussions at K V T. Have a little cheat sheet. Maybe I could get it on my phone.
It's a book.
The book. Well, that'd have to be on the phone then.
It's that thick, it's a book. Aviation acronyms.
Maybe I'll have enough of a storage space. Blair, are you ready?
I don't have any, we're.
Nothing? I got none? Yeah.
Probably quick though, um.
Take one down and pass it around.
Uh, I went ahead and made a little flyer with all the events for two thousand twenty five. So we can kind of get those dates on, on folks' calendar. Uh, the organizer of the Coffee and Chocolate Festival, she came to me um. Weeks ago and said that she had had some things come up, she wasn't able to do it, and wanted to know if I wanted to take it over, so. I think it's a really great event. It's pretty easy to um to get vendors, um. Doesn't take a lot of time to plan and it's always a really good turnout, so um I told her that I would do it. And so that is set for March first and second. Uh, normally there's a fee to enter, obviously we're waiving that fee, so. Uh, it'd be free to anybody that wants to come, and it's from nine to two on March first. And then it is from nine to two on March second. Uh, but there's an hour timeframe in there for um anyone that has any kind of um this anxiety or. That first hour on Sunday, they can shop veterans. Have a time, a little bit slower time that maybe encourage them to shop during that timeframe, but. Nine to two both days, Saturday and Sunday at the uh Civic Center. I'll be looking for folks to do the uh welcome dance during that timeframe, so um. Anyway, that's really all I got.
It was short and sweet. Yeah, I really liked the idea of the pink moon paddle glow.
Yes.
The full moon is awesome, by the way, coming up, whoever had a chance to see it. So it's gonna be a nighttime event, or an evening event?
Evening event, yeah.
That'd be pretty cool.
All things pink and the pink moon will be out, so should be fun.
And the Earth Day celebration, is there already a crew working on that? So the, the dam already does something, right?
Yeah, we just do it in partnership with, with the dam. Um, we usually have some live music and tea tasting and uh they do a tree giveaway. Succulents giveaway, uh they do like rock painting.
When do you usually turn the food trucks back on?
May.
May.
Yeah, that first weekend in May will be the first food trucks.
Any questions for Blair? So I miss.
Let's just go on, right?
She can take it.
Very minimal this year.
Take a deep breath. Um. Okay. Anything else? Glendon, you've been pretty quiet.
Just.
Just writing, like always, writing and recording.
Just throwing the bigger.
There's nothing like going in, checking the recording and it having some problem and you can't pose a minute, so I'm glad you're right. Alright, um, go around the table. Miss Councilman.
I'm, I'm just so thrilled to be here and I'm looking forward to listening a lot this first year especially and working with you all. I'm excited.
Dustin?
Uh, nothing business. I am also, I'm thrilled to be here and uh, you know, it's uh. It's a very important position and I respect that and I have a lot of respect for y'all and I'm, you know, looking forward to learning from all y'all. Got a lot to learn. I'm excited.
I'm glad you're going to COA and, and Nita's going, Nita, you got something in, in particular?
Uh, just that I hate to bring it up, but I did have somebody who has previously been interested in the grant to call me and ask me.
Okay.
If there was a problem with that or why nothing had happened and I'm just uh. When, when you brought up workshop, I wonder if it would maybe just throwing this idea out there. That we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
With that committee, and maybe it would be a good thing to have the committee to just come and sit down with us and re-go over that. Was it a ordinance that we had when we awarded the grant? Was it an ordinance or a resolution?
It was uh an amount put in the budget. And that's the.
But we had some paperwork.
Right, there were some example, grant language.
Nothing's ever been sent out to that.
I know the application hasn't, but I'm wanting where we had paperwork and I had worked on it with Greg. And we had.
Right.
Come with everything there, that we had the paperwork that night when we.
And that's the starting, that's the starting point. It's already been the starting point, it's been the discussion point with the committee, okay? And I talked to the committee chairman already and he's, he's not available this week, but we hope to get rolling on that this, this month. But we can give a date on the workshop for sure. So it's in the budget, okay? And the preliminary.
Well, I know it's in the budget, I just would like for us, maybe Dustin and Danae to, to see those, the, that we had, all that we had, had it written out. Council members all got one, and then we had to pass some kind of ordinance or resolution to get it in the budget. Am I, am I?
I don't think, we, I just think we just put it in the.
It's in the budget.
Well, I had to come up with a lot of stuff before Greg would let me put it in the budget.
That may be.
That I agree.
You know, and so that's.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of pre-work's been done. You and I went and talked to some of the stakeholders who'd be interested in it.
Yeah.
And we had some preliminary discussions about uh. Where we'd be, what's a reasonable package to put together as far as expectations in return for the grant. There was discussions about what a public purpose is. And, and a lot of.
That was all in that paperwork.
Yes, mm-hmm. Well, not, not even all of it was, was documented uh in that paperwork. Some of those discussions we had, we're just talking to some stakeholders. But there was more work than even paper. There was a lot.
There was more work than even the paper, but there, but the paper outlined everything that Greg had asked for when we did that, and I thought that might be helpful for the committee to see that.
And the committee has seen it, and they, they have it, and I can send it back out to the, to the council.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay. Anything else? No, okay. Jeremy?
I'm good.
You're good? Kevin? And last but not least, Best Black's Ralph. Okay.
Well, I'm glad that uh, like, like I said, I'm glad folks are taking advantage of uh our partnership at KLC. I mean, they're a business and they're, they're an important business relationship. They carry insurance and we spend some money with KLC and. With uh being able to pick up the phone and talk to people who are in the business of helping cities remain in business is, is an important part of that organization, so. Any questions on KLC? Of course, you got an inroad with our, with our uh. Uh, president of KLC is easily, easily, she's a local phone call for us, right, so. Well, I will say, uh, KLC will be uh having a uh House Bill fifty five, which is your planning and zoning training. Uh, for, for planning and zoning people and staff, it will be held here, one of them will be held here. So we were able to get them to come back to Calvert. They'd been there several years ago and I've talked to them this year, or last fall. And so they've got us on the calendar for April, so they'll be here in April, so.
So we're gonna be at Civic Center or downstairs?
Downstairs.
Downstairs. So can council members attend that?
Yeah, I mean, there's a fee for the class, but yes.
Okay. And our, and our committees have, our committees have to go.
You're welcome to. And generally, if the individuals that come are very knowledgeable and you, if you do come, you'll, you'll probably walk away with a better understanding about planning and zoning works.
When was the date?
I don't have the day exactly. I know it is April. I think it's on the calendar, but somewhat. I'm taking again, I'll let me get the date. I don't want to throw it out there yet and be wrong, but I know it is in April. And I forgot what's, what the day of the month was.
Unless there's a comment from the crowd, I would, I would take a motion.
Hey, Gene, I'd like to thank some of the council members that have taken the path of the water and toured the meetings.
Okay.
Appreciate that. And thank you all for being there. I appreciate it.
And uh.
Y'all are setting a good example.
I'm sorry.
We need to pick up the slack.
April twenty fourth, okay.
April twenty fourth for that training?
Yeah.
And there's a, if somebody wants to, to look in depth at the city facilities, anybody? The uh department heads can be available. Just gotta say, hey. Take a look. That may be, may be something we talk about at the workshop, maybe. Facilities planning and being aware of our facilities that we manage is pretty important, too.
The chief may have to put you in the backseat, because I don't think there's any room on the passenger side, but he'll take you around town.
I'll follow, I'll follow him.
I'm not getting, I'm not getting in the back, I don't want to get in the backseat either.
I'm like Kevin.
Can you row down the wind and fly?
I'll let you drive my truck, how's that?
Well, he's got a truck he can drive. So let's get the truck out there in the, there in the snow?
Oh, yeah.
It did alright.
Needs to be exercised, that's good. Alright, well, Kevin, we're waiting on you.
No, for the business, I like making motion adjournments.
Second, you got a motion in second. Uh, all in favor? Uh, opposed, we're adjourned, so thank you.
I'm excited.